We are reconvening to regular session. Sorry for the delay. We had some technical issues. Evelyn, roll call please.
Trustee McAvoy.
President.
Trustee Wells.
Here.
Trustee Lawson.
Here.
Vice President Marcus.
Here.
President Diaz-Locum.
Here. So moving on to item 4.2, report out of closed session from October 19th. The board met to talk about the superintendent's annual evaluation and no action was taken. 4.3, report out of closed session from October 21st. We received information from staff. Again, no action was taken. 4.4, report out of closed session from October 26th. We received an update and no action was taken. Welcome, everybody here in person and at home. If you'd like to speak to the board, please complete a card and give it to Evelyn. If you're at home, please complete the Google Doc. Si necesitas traducción en español, por favor llama a 978-990-5137 y presiona 8377041 y la tecla del número. And if you're here in person, we have Gonzalo. Si estás aquí en persona, tenemos a Gonzalo para ayudarles. If you want to speak to us about any of the consent items, please let us know because we vote on those all at once. With that, do we have any changes to the agenda this evening?
I'll propose we move 11.2, the Measure U addendum, and 11.3, the personnel changes to consent.
Any other changes? If not, can I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, roll call please, Evelyn.
Trustee McAvoy.
Aye.
Trustee Wells.
Aye.
Trustee Lawson.
Aye.
Vice President Marcus.
Aye.
President Diaz-Locum.
Aye. So moving on to 8.1, oral communication. Evelyn, do we have any speakers this evening?
No speaker phones.
Okay. And moving on to 9.1, first reading and discussion of Board Policy 3320, Claims and Actions Against the District.
Thank you for the time tonight to speak about three board policies and/or administrative regulations that span a variety of topics. This first one, 9.1, is regarding claims and actions against the district. It is update, it's an update, it's not a new policy, but it clarifies the Government Claims Act noted and policies and procedures in regards to filing and opens up the ability for an electronic filing system as a summary. And the board policy met recently and reviewed this, and of course, it originates from CSBA. Are there any questions regarding this particular item?
No. Elisa or Janet?
No.
Okay, that means you guys did a great job. So moving on to 9.2, first reading and discussion of Board Policy 3516.5, Emergency Schedule.
Thank you. So this particular policy was updated as well, which includes now hazardous environmental or weather conditions, which seems recently apropos as we are processing through different weather climates even in California. And so this particular board policy noted with events occurring after September 1st, 2021, she'll develop a plan for offering independent study within 10 days of school closure in regards to an emergency condition. I do want to point out that the, an update for independent study will be coming very soon. We'll be discussing it at our next Board Policy Committee meeting in November. So this plan doesn't delineate or describe that type of service to students, but it does talk about protocols in that regard for an emergency situation. Any questions?
Moving on, we'll move right along to item 9.3, First Reading and Discussion of Board Policy 5141, Healthcare and Emergencies.
Thank you. This policy is really looking at specific safety, health, and welfare of a student at school or during a school-sponsored activity. It is an update and it, the main portion of the update involves an AED device. And so it was timely to make sure that board policy was updated, including new ARs that were added that will help staff. So our directors reviewed this and our nurses for appropriate content and the reasonable ability to implement as well as the Board Policy Committee. Any questions?
Okay, having none, we'll move on to the consent items. Can I have a motion to move all on the consent list, including 11.2 and 11.3?
So moved.
I'll second.
Roll call, Evelyn.
Trustee McAvoy.
Aye.
Trustee Wells.
Aye.
Trustee Lawson.
Aye.
Vice President Marcus.
Aye.
President Diaz-Locum.
Aye. Moving on to 11.1, Recommendation Regarding Adoption of Resolution 17, Authorizing Electronic Meetings of the Board of Trustees During the State of Emergency Pursuant to Government Code Section 54953E. And we all know what that is, so I have a motion to move that, please.
So moved.
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Trustee McAvoy.
Aye.
Trustee Wells.
Aye.
Trustee Lawson.
Aye.
Vice President Marcus.
Aye.
President Diaz-Locum.
Aye. And now we're on to 12.1, Reports From Board Members and Superintendents. And today, we're starting with Dr. Baker.
All right, so many of us went to the CSBA dinner on a week ago Monday. So very interesting and wonderful guest speakers that we had. And I believe Mike and Elisa were the two that were there. And Elisa did a fantastic job of introducing guests and welcoming everyone. So thank you, Elisa. Many of us were at our first Redwood City together in-person meeting just last week. And a couple of board members also were at that meeting. And then I also had a conversation with Rich Jen because Rich was very concerned in regard to, I believe it was, he had a request for one of the speakers that was at CSBA and regarding special ed and the costs that districts incur. And wanted to know if I'd be interested in speaking with our legislature along with their board and superintendent regarding these costs to see how we can somehow mitigate or get the state to pay us more dollars. So I said, yes, I'd be very interested. So he's getting that together and for Sequoia and Redwood City, and when that comes to fruition, I'll ask for maybe a couple of board members to go with me to explain our costs and what it entails for Redwood City, especially when you have to place a child outside of the school system into an NPS. And as we were talking, we have some students that are not even in our state. They're in another state for their NPS. So he wanted to get more clarity to legislatures and for us to see if we can get some assistance. And I'm definitely all for that, and I'm sure you would be too. Of course, our meeting with the principals and then many of us attended the Garfield Ribbon Cutting. That was last week. And don't forget, there's another one coming up on Friday. It's right around the corner for Orion. And that's all I have.
Mike?
Nope, Dr. Baker covered them. The San Antonio County School Boards Association Dinner and the ribbon cutting. And then also met a couple, a few parents from Adelante, Roosevelt, and Kennedy.
Cecilia?
So besides the ribbon cutting, I also attended the CNS Committee. I do have to say that the CNS team has put a lot of effort and making a lot of changes. They've done a lot of scratch cooking, so that's, you know, one big thing. And I do want to acknowledge their efforts, even when they're short-staffed. A lot of the managers have been having to step in and cover some of those shifts as well. We're moving right along. And what else? I don't know. I'm thinking that. I'm bringing my notes unfortunately, but am I missing something? Yes.
I also have the wellness in the schools portion, the work they're doing right now to bring in recommendations. Consideration of the exchange 2324. And then continue the evaluation on menus and the foods that students are choosing to eat. The groups of students are eating, so we can make changes.
You know, Rick, Janet, could you hear very well? I don't know that our audience.
No.
Could you get a little closer to the mic?
I don't think it's.
Please, thank you.
It didn't look, sound like it was on.
It's not on.
Yeah, his mic's not working.
It's on.
Okay, I just, I don't think the audience got to hear that either.
Okay, can we try a different mic?
All right, thank you. I had mentioned another key point that we talked about was the evaluation we're going through with Wellness in the Schools. Their anticipated report coming in late December, so we would have that for consideration of implementation for the 2324 school year with the continuous evaluation of the foods that students are eating and the foods that students aren't eating. So we can make appropriate changes to encourage participation in the launch program now that it's free for all.
Janet?
So Dr. Baker also attended the RCTA Climate Meeting, the RCSD-RCTA Climate Meeting. I was there briefly. I had to leave early and Wendy Kelly was there too. Elisa and I attended the Wellness Committee meeting. And then my stuff's covered Garfield Ribbon Cutting, which was wonderful, and Redwood City together.
Lisa?
Yeah, so I think, let's see, many of the things were covered by Dr. Baker and Janet. In addition to some of those other joint things, I did attend the North Star 25th Anniversary Event, which was a really nice community event, and I think it was one of the first big things they had had, you know, the last couple of years. It was nice to see families and students out there having a good time. And then I also went to the Roy Cloud Community Festival last Thursday and very similarly, similar huge turnout. You know, every parent and student that I talked to was just really happy to be back out and together as a community. I was told that their dad's club barbecued almost 900 meals. I think it was close to 900, so pretty incredible turnout for them. And they also had a book fair as well, so that was kind of fun. And then I did attend a CSBA webinar on safety and it was recorded. It was both on school site and then also cybersecurity. And, you know, I think we're doing a lot of those things, so I'm not sure I learned that much new, except for there are resources from the state and the feds if we were ever in a position where we needed some additional assistance. So that was good to know. And, oh, I did attend the Chambers Government Relations Meeting and just heard updates from the city and county, state and feds. And actually, it was at that meeting where I learned about the special ordinance that, the emergency ordinance that just got implemented by the city. So that's where I first heard about that. And then, let's see, oh, I did go to a Chamber Networking Event. And I think they just had, you know, they used to have those regularly and because of COVID, they haven't had those. And I think this is their third one. It's the first time I've been to them. And I will say it was really nice to reconnect with our business leaders who are so supportive of the schools as well as our nonprofit leaders and other partners, you know, the city and county folks who are there. And that's it for me. Thank you.
Okay, the only additional thing I have is meeting with parents regarding safety at Brown Hoover School and what you mentioned, Elisa. They proposed opening of a gun shop at Roosevelt Plaza. That's it. Moving on to 13.1, Empowered Digital Lead Learner Program Presentation.
So it, okay, you can hear me. So it brings me great pleasure and joy to present Kathy James and Bronya Whip, who in, for the past many years have been our technology integration coaches, but they are much more than that, as you will be hearing tonight. They have been providing training for teachers over the past many years in the use of technology. And that has now blossomed into an expanded program where there's a connection between teaching teachers to, to, to learn and to make choices and to take charge of their own learning in the same way we want our students to do that. And so they're going to talk about that and the connection between their work and our Redwood City student profile that they will be explaining to you as well. And I just have to say, I know that you received the copy of the slides, but they're nothing like what you're about to see tonight, which are all animated and super cool. And so it sets a standard that none of the rest of us are going to be able to match. And so just so you keep your expectations lower for the rest of us. But so I'd like to introduce Kathy and Bronya, who will be speaking from the podium and probably driving the slides from there. And if not, I will help. So let me share my screen.
Welcome, guys. And Liz, there are no excuses. I had to go to some of their trainings and they're fantastic. We'll get there eventually. We can all learn.
All right. Thanks for having us here. I'm Kathy James and I'm here with Bronya to share with you some of the work that we've been doing in staff development to empower our teachers as learners. We're really happy to be here with you. We feel like this work is more important than ever. And so before we get into the details of what we've been doing, we want to do, we want to lay the stage a little bit by reviewing some of our current situation in education and as a district. So I'm turned over to Bronya.
So.
You have to speak into the.
Oh, I have to speak into the mouth. It's going to be hard for me. So if you, the news has changed a lot in the last few years. So pretend that you're watching the news on TV or reading a newspaper or any of the other ways that we get the news. There's probably, if you see an article or a news story about education, it's probably about one of two issues. The first is, we've all heard it, there is a tremendous teacher shortage in California and in the United States at large. This is caused because we have fewer people in the pipeline getting their credential. And at the same time, we have teachers who are retiring, leaving our area, or just leaving the profession. Now, this is a really complicated issue, and I don't want to say that you're supposed to change. I don't want to say that PD is going to solve it, but it is shown by research to be a step that we can take. Research shows in our country and abroad that a good quality professional development does lead not only to better student outcomes, but also to higher self-efficacy amongst teachers and greater job satisfaction. The other issue that has been really big, especially in the last seven days, which was after these slides were made. So there is even more I could have added here that I didn't. But we're very worried about the achievement gap, again, in California and in the nation at large. And that's exacerbated by the fears of the COVID, the so-called COVID slide. Again, this is something that we can take steps forward towards. We don't have to just take it. We can do many things, but one of those things is high-quality PD. We have research, again, that shows that helping teachers learn how to set the stage so that students are active, skilled learners will help to bring about a decrease of that achievement gap while also helping teachers' feelings of self-efficacy again.
And so as we face, as we, you know, are thinking about these challenges, we know in staff development that our efforts work best when they are aligned across the district and are informed by kind of a common sense of understanding of purpose and goals. And so wanted to just take a minute to sort of look at some of the history of what we've been working on as a district and therefore what we want our teachers to be working on as well. Going back to 2018, we did some work in the district with Yvette Jackson around the question of describe an RCSD graduate or what do we want an RCSD graduate to look like. Administrators from all over the district, as well as staff development and many district office people worked on creating a big brainstorm of that. And then at the sites, they took it to the sites and the teachers also contributed to that. And when those, those characteristics were compiled, we had a list that that brought out characteristics like we want them to be curious, we want them to be collaborative. We want students who feel empowered. We want students who have agency over their own learning. We continued work with Yvette Jackson, and I believe she met with the school board. And that led rise to the equity policy that this board created. And along in that policy were administrative resolutions, including our Ed Services one, that raised our, our sense of importance around addressing the four Cs, creativity, communication, collaboration, and critical thinking, which we're hearing from the business world, our skills that they want to see in future employees. And so those are also things that we're trying to value and bring forward to our teachers. And that brings us to our learner framework.
So all of those, all of those steps that Kathy just mentioned are all about students. And they lead directly and naturally into something that we call the learner framework. Sorry. I'm getting a little bit of a brain freeze. Oh, so the framework combines the personal characteristics that we worked on with Yvette Jackson with the four Cs that come out of the administrative standards or resolution, excuse me. We have a framework that is made of four buckets, four categories. We have empowered learners, knowledge constructors, effective collaborators, and creative communicators. These targets are inspired by some that were written by the International Society for Technology and Education. But the way we're using them, we've modified them and broadened them so that they're not just about use of technology in the classroom. It does include technology, but it's not limited to that. It's about all types of learning. Really, again, to improve the creativity, the four Cs, and also to lead to these characteristics that the, the district worked on with Yvette and in the equity policy. So when we incorporate these four categories into our tier-one instruction so that all students are able to work towards these learning targets, then what we see is that we have students who can self-actualize, who become skilled learners, who become active learners. And then we're also helping teachers because they have a sharper focus in what they're doing in the classroom. It's not here you need to do this initiative and that initiative and the other initiative. It's that all of these things that we're doing are towards the same thing, helping students.
So as Bronya was saying, our learner framework is not solely intended just to be descriptive of our students because it also informs what we aspire to as lifelong learners and educators. And it is what we want to provide for our adult learners as well. And so we want to give them the opportunity to feel inspired, to feel empowered and engaged. And that kind of leads us to our Empowered Digital Learners Program. One of our participants last year said that the Empowered Digital Learners Program was reanimating her professionally. And that's sort of what we're looking for is that energy and that sense of camaraderie and joy of being educators together and often is hard to find when you're tired at the end of the day. And so we're, we're, we are very energized by how excited the teachers get when they participate in the program. The main idea of the Empowered Learner Program is to provide a structured, safe, productive place for teachers to come together and construct knowledge together to refine and reflect on their practices, to reflect on their personal beliefs and values, and to think about how they can foster safe, equitable conditions for learning in their classrooms, and then to share ultimately what they learn with their colleagues and to spread it outward. Our current Empowered Learners Program had its roots in what was originally called the Digital Lead Learners Program. And that started way back in 2015. As a way of building capacity in our district, when we started to see a big growth in access to technology and we just really didn't have very many teachers who knew how to use it well. And we needed to produce more leaders at the sites who could then mentor and kind of coach and bring along their colleagues. We continued it a couple of years after that with different focuses. We had a year that we focused on reading. We had a year that we focused on STEAM. And we ultimately started putting on our own district conferences and having our participants present at those conferences. And then when we hit 2020 and the pandemic, we obviously had a whole different problem with technology and, and everybody needed to learn it quickly. And so we, we did it virtually that year with a focus on equity. And that, that kind of led to giving us an opportunity last year to do a research project with Stanford. They had a graduate student, Robert Pronovos, who came and worked with Bronya. And I studied our program and its feasibility for, as, you know, a professional development program and also coached along with us as we were sort of developing and codifying what the program was about. I feel like I had one more point, but I'm forgetting, so I'm going to go on. Out of that work, we kind of pulled, teased out what we thought were the core components of what was making this productive professional development and useful for other areas of our work. And it really came And it really came around the fact that it's collaborative, that teachers had choice, that they had agency in what they were learning and that they had the support that they needed to actualize what they wanted to try and do in their classes by having coaches who kind of came alongside them in that work. And so it's made up of a kind of a mix of workshops where we come together and we have collaborative space for the teachers to work as a team. And then coaching sessions where one-on-one coach works with the teacher on what they've selected to work on as their aspirational goal. To give you a, just a brief look at what those goals might look like. This is a video of our past participants sharing about what they chose as their aspiration or, or the, the inspiration for their project. Do we have to do something for the sound over there?
Liz, are you on mute? The laptop that's presenting needs to be in a different room for the sound to work properly.
I think because of video played, it's, there we go. She's going to do it. Thank you. So when our, our CSD teachers participate in empowered learner programs such as EDL, there's outcomes that affect both the teachers and the students. We see an increase in collaborative activities. We see students who direct their own learning through creating goals and through reflection and through iteration. We see multiple forms of assessment and we see engagement and we see active learning. We also see teachers who are active learners themselves and who share their expertise. They're creating what we call PD snacks and then sharing those with admin administrators and with their colleagues. They can be shown in staff meetings. They're shared in our newsletter so that teachers are learning from other teachers. And we have feedback and survey responses from teachers who say they really appreciate learning from their colleagues. Yeah, I, I think that video really destroyed our clicker. Thank you. So that's a, what our PD snacks website looks like that we've shared with all of the sites. We've very mindfully and intentionally worked to make sure that across our district, all, all sites, grade levels and most content areas are represented by the teachers who participate. And in the end, our, it just in the last few years, our teachers have created 67 shareable learning products such as the PD snacks I just mentioned, or how-to guides and asynchronous workshops. We also have 27 workshop presenters who presented at conferences in their staff PD days, at virtual trainings and at the California STEAM Symposium. Last spring, we had an empower learning conference where all of the presenters were either current or previous participants in one of our empowered learner programs. We had faculty who came on a Saturday and learned about topics such as creating curiosity in the classroom, genius hour, making time for self-assessment, digital notebooks. And we had across the board, really, really positive feedback from those attending teachers for their colleagues who created these PV programs. So we have some videos that we linked. I don't think we want to show them right now, but these are some testimonials from some of our participants. If you want to see a little bit more about what they have to say. And then we also wanted to share a few quotes that some of them have. So one aspect of our research project that we did with Robert last year was that he gave, he did surveys and, and just, and talked with people about what was working and what was making it an effective program. And so he, we were able to collect some of their feedback on slide 30. Sorry. There we go. And so here are some of the things that they said. They talked about how it was affecting how well their students felt valued in the classroom. So again, our teachers are learners and they feel valued, but they also were observing that their students were feeling valued because of the changes that they made. And it wasn't just the ones who were raising their hands. It was everybody. They saw that their students were more enthusiastic and happier in the classroom. And then they also felt themselves that they were really getting meaning and insights from the colleagues that they were working with.
And so besides the participants getting to present in conferences, Branya and I also had the chance to present recently with, along with Robert to share our work at the California STEAM Symposium in Anaheim. And we were able to share there our newly published handbook on how, on the core elements of how to do an empowered learners program.
So one other piece of our, of our work, of our project, and especially as it comes with the, the learner framework, the empowered learner, the knowledge constructors, the effective collaborators, and the creative communicators is we've been working with site administrators and helping them to understand that learner framework so that they can work with their staffs. So this is an example of one activity that our site administrators and our district administrators did where they were us, they collaboratively were assigned different targets and compared the target to either a book character or an animal that they thought personified that target and did a sketch and tell activity. So we see that creative communicator was Mr. Rogers and effective collaborator was a bee hive, which are both great metaphors. And then the next slide. Oops. There we go. And then another thing that we've done with them is collaboratively created some planning posters with questions that teachers can ask themselves as they're creating projects and activities and lessons in the classroom to make sure that they are injecting this learner framework.
And then the other thing that has come out of this work is that we have colleagues who are also the, doing work on other empowered learner programs. So there's a cohort in math that is called math squared, math empowered. It's math equity, math equity empowered learners. We have empowered literacy learning leaders. We have science empowered equity learners. And we have an upcoming group that's going to be focused on STEAM. That's going to be continuing our work that we did with Robert Pronovos, only doing it out of the county, working with people at the Semitoad County of Education and with teachers from Ravenswood. So kind of taking our work and expanding it beyond just our district. And so just to kind of end, we just want to affirm that if we want to have our CSD graduates who are empowered, curious, collaborative, confident, caring, all those descriptive words that we brainstormed and so that we valued, then we need to have them engaged in learning and being, have them asking questions, investigating, collaborating and working together to solve problems. And to do that, we need classrooms that foster the, the learner framework. And to do that, we need teachers who feel empowered to continue their own learning, construct knowledge, collaborate with colleagues, communicate with stakeholders. And that takes school leaders, administrators who value learning and create a culture that empowers teachers and students. And that requires, oops. That requires us to have district and community leaders who value the learning of students and teachers and create systems that empower learning across the organization. And so we really want to thank the board for continuing to support this work that we've been doing. And we're excited to see where it goes next. Like, I think Liz and I are fighting every. Okay. So we want to open it to questions.
Questions or comments? I can't see if Lisa or Janet have any.
I'll, I'll just say thank you for coming and presenting, showing us all the work that's going on there. I think professional development and we see that there's that link between student outcomes, which is what we were really passionate about and the professional development and how, I love that this district is really focused on professional development. I think that's a credit to Dr. Baker, this will have the whole cabinet. So I'm glad to see it. It's really neat to see the collaboration. I, I love like the, the modern learning, the 21st century. I don't know what to call it, but it's the, the focus on collaboration and really having student-led. So that's just so much fun to see, see that in there. I'd love to come out and see it in action at some point. We'll have to find a way to get a tour for that. But thank you for putting together this presentation and obviously for the work that led into the presentation tonight.
Lisa, do you have any comments or questions?
Um, I don't have any questions. I just wanted to say thank you very much, Kathy and Brianna. It's so good to hear from you tonight. And Kathy, I thought it was telling when you think back to where we were at in 2015, 2016, right? And where we are today. I mean, that was one silver lining of COVID, right? That it really pushed, I mean, really kind of the whole world, but it certainly pushed our specific school district to, to really look at, you know, digital learning and individualized learning and how do we support everybody and all of that? So that's great. I did also wanted to say in addition to what Mike said, I, I won't repeat what he said, but I, I really like that our district has taken on the lead of professional development, teacher to teacher, and really using our own teachers because we have so much experience and wealth and knowledge and really sharing the best practices with one another. I think all the coaching that we've done, and again, I know Dr. Baker, that was one of the things that I think you and working with Liz and professional development, we really embrace and we're doing even more of. And again, that sort of teacher supporting teachers, right? And being open to learning together. And I think that's sort of what you were saying, Mike, is with, you know, that, that learning environment, we're all learning, right? We're, we're continuing to learn together. So I really appreciate all that our staff development team does. Thank you for the presentation. It was really interesting. And, and I would love to get the video link so I could watch those. Thank you so much.
So I was just going to mention on the video links that they should work on the PDF. I tested them in the board notes so that you should be able to get to those links on there.
Thank you.
And just to, to save my voice, I'm just going to say ditto to what my colleagues have said. I love this and thank you very much for your presentation.
Cecilia?
Same. Thank you. Of course. You guys are great. And I do appreciate everything you guys, as well as every teacher is doing for our students. Especially when you talked about coming in to do PD during a Saturday. I mean, they already, you guys do a lot already. And so that's definitely, you know, we really want to say that we appreciate it. And then when we talk about students and staff feeling value, I think at the end, when you said, you know, you need classrooms, you need leaders, I think we all can attest to our support for everything that you guys are doing for our community. So again, thank you very much for everything you guys do.
And I would like, I like to echo what my colleagues have said and go one step further to say that we must always remember that the most important person to the student is that teacher. And you guys have done an outstanding job of supporting that teacher, the one that needs it. And I have seen it firsthand during your workshops where that teacher is having a little trouble. And when they get out of that, they feel confident. They feel empowered, as you said. And Liz, you have always said, everybody can learn. And I think this is a great, a great presentation of how that happens. And I would once again like to say thank you to John because he has been always putting those funds there so that we can support our teachers. As we all know with, you know, you come out of school with a degree, but the actual work takes place in the classroom and they don't teach you everything that you need to know. And as you know, my colleague said, the world changed. And you guys have really done a lot to support our students and our teachers. So thank you to you both and to your team and to Liz for spearheading, you know, spearheading that. And just keep it up. You guys are right on. Thank you for coming tonight. John, did you want to say?
Is John speaking? His mic is off.
Are they having technical difficulties?
We are having technical difficulties. As I said previously regarding the, the 21st century, it's not this device that's here in front of me. This is a tool. But the collaboration, the communication, the creative thinking is what companies are looking for. And I remember back in 1516 when you guys did, do you remember those sessions on Saturday? And they were at MIT and, and you got to choose from, oh, and, and you, sorry. And you got to, and you got to choose whatever session you want to. And we even invited some other districts to come. I mean, the amount of energy that was in the rooms that time was amazing. And we had other engineers come from other companies to talk to the teachers of the importance. So that was the beginning. That was the beginning. I applaud you for that. The other piece is, which is without being. which is without being, should I say selfish, is a good word, because you just went to that symposium. And I know my colleagues, because I've mentioned it to the board members, and I've mentioned it to Liz and to Wendy, that afternoon on a Saturday, I am getting a phone call from a colleague, a neighboring superintendent, where did you find these ladies? And I said, what are you talking about? And I knew you were there. And so I let it, I let her elaborate. And I said, you know, they've been with us for many years. Kathy, from what I understand, you were in Sequoia before you even came to us, correct? And Kathy came to us to, in the area of technology, and Bronya, you were somewhere else also. And so she wanted all the nitty gritty, how much are they paid? How did you find them? And I go, you know, we can have that conversation sometime Saturday afternoon, and join this, enjoy this symposium. So not to, to brag or anything, but this is now a buzz around the superintendents in the county. And it's not that I, I, I have to run the, we have an association, and every year it rotates who's going to preside over the association. It's not that you're voted in, it's your turn. And this subject comes up, so I may have you come one day and present to the other supes, because they want to get a taste of this. All because there was another superintendent that was at your symposium, that is very interested in what you're doing here in Redwood City, and see if they can replicate it in their districts. So my hat's off to you for all the work that you do with our staff, with our teachers, especially the administrators, those of us that need help quite often, being me. And it's really great that you can just, Bronya, I don't understand this, Kathy, I don't understand, can you walk me through it? It's, it's just amazing to have this type of expertise in an elementary school district, and you don't see it happening. So I applaud you very much. Thank you so much for all you do. I really do. Oh yeah, you need this.
And Dr. Baker does learn, because he spent, I believe, almost a whole day making that video. So, you know, he walks the talk. I forgot what that program was, but it takes a bit to put all those pieces together, and he did it because he wanted to see what it was like for the teachers. And I applaud him for that. Okay, moving on to 13.2, recognition of certificated employees. And before we go move on to the staff, I would like to say that Mike has reminded me that it was principals' month, wasn't it? So, on behalf of the board, we want to thank all our principals and vice principals for all your hard work and dedication to our students. You guys are out on the front line, so we just want you to know, you guys are, as Dennis would say, rock stars. Thank you for all you do. Okay, so is this Wendy?
Thank you. So on that note, we would like to recognize our two staff development team members. There are quite a few, but tonight we thought it was apropos, considering this presentation. And to all the certificated staff out there that are just making such amazing differences every day, we are thrilled to bring these recognitions incrementally throughout the year to celebrate. And so, tonight we thought this would be a very timely moment to recognize Kathy James and Bronya Whip for the outstanding commitment to our CSD staff development department. Kathy and Bronya have been consistent teaching their leaders in the area of technology integration and staff development over the years. Kathy joined our CSD in 2012 as a technology integration teacher. She was one of the co-founders of the Digital Lead Learner Program in 1516, which you heard about, which aimed to build capacity for technology teacher leadership. In 2017 and 18, the district held technology conferences for local districts and our CSD employees was also a hit Dr. Baker mentioned. Kathy was a leader in this effort. Her desire to build capacity is evident through her day-to-day coaching efforts and ability to meet teachers where they are and build upon their interests in technology and creation for student engagement. Bronya joined the staff development team in August 2019, and since then has joined the work of increasing equity among students in the area of technology during virtual learning. Last year, Stanford approached our CSD for a possible research study. Digital Lead Learners and our CSD learner framework were selected as the focus. And the our CSD learner framework develops empowered learners, creative communicators, knowledge constructors, and effective collaborators as aligned with the district's mission and vision. Recently, Ms. Whip and Ms. James presented at the STEAM conference in Anaheim on this newest program, the Empowered Digital Learners Program. We appreciate you representing our CSD in such innovative efforts. The goal of the Empowered Digital Learner Program is to learn together, build community, define instructional challenges, and create a plan for research practice. Within this program, the goal is to intentionally model strategies and tools in each meeting that empowers teachers to have choice, voice, and agency in their own professional paths. Recently, an our CSD teacher stated, quote, "The Empowered Digital Leader Learner Program is pushing me to be a better educator, to thoughtfully curate student-created evidence, to center students and empower them to teach their teachers, and to think of next steps for myself professionally and academically," end quote. This year, Samhain County Office of Education and our CSD are planning to run a similar program that will focus on STEAM and include teachers from our CSD in Ravenswood. The district appreciates Ms. Whip and Ms. James' initiative, drive to seek better outcomes for our staff and students, and to continuously be on top of the newest and latest research in technology and infusion of technology standards. So the Redwood City School District would like to show our appreciation for Kathy and Bronya's dedication with a certificate and board acknowledgement tonight. Thank you. I think Dr. Baker would like to hand these out.
I was just going to say thank you. Bronya says thank you.
Very, very welcome. Well deserved.
Thank you so much.
13.3, recognition of classified employees.
Well, along with that celebration, of course, we also like to recognize a member of our classified staff, or excuse me, members in this case of our classified staff. We have quite a robust child nutrition department. And as Trustee Marquez mentioned earlier, they have really been a shining light in the hard work. So, the, the school board and the district would like to recognize the child nutrition department's staff for their hard work and dedication to supporting our CSD students through fresh nutritious meals. The child department, excuse me, child nutrition department worked through the COVID pandemic, swiftly changing its procedures to ensure that our CSD students who were learning at home still had access to meals. The staff began scheduling drive-through opportunities for families to pick up several days' worth of meals at various school sites. And they also collaborated with the transportation department to deliver food directly to communities. It was quite a remarkable effort. Since returning to onsite learning, the child nutrition staff have been preparing a higher volume of food daily to meet the request of the state to provide all students the opportunity to enjoy meals at school. In doing this work, the child nutrition staff are making new fast-scratch menu entrees and preparing a variety of fruits and vegetables. We thank our hard-working child nutrition staff for their dedication and commitment to our students throughout the years. We truly appreciate them every single day. And so they need to, this group of hard-working individuals, get up very early in the morning. And so, their supervisor, Patricia Correa, will be passing their certificates out individually. But we want to thank them so much publicly for all of their hard work.
I just share one other thing that last week's superintendent's newsletter highlighted a bunch of this stuff too. So it's good information. That's also where I saw the principals' month. But last week was National School Lunch Week, so this is also very apropos, and that's great. And it's just, it was, it's worth going back and looking at the newsletter if you haven't seen it, because it talks about all the quality improvements that Ms. Kelly had mentioned, the variety of foods, the fresh ingredients instead of prepackaged stuff, and even new breakfast menu items that sounded pretty exciting, like the egg sandwich and the hot oatmeal replacing baked goods. So it's awesome to see those changes, and really appreciate the work that they're doing, because we know there are kids in this district that really rely on this, this kids and families, and everything that we do there really makes a difference for them.
Thank you for that reminder, and I would echo my thanks. They did work very hard and continue to do so, especially with all the challenges that they've gone through. So, thank you, guys. Moving on to 13.4, contract update information on the credit card summary. Do we have any comments or questions on that? None? Okay. 13.5, Redwood City School District Review of Connect Charter Schools Unaudited Actials. Do we have any comments or questions on that? I must say, I just received a letter from the county office of it regarding the unaudited actials for the three charter schools, which we can share with the rest of you as well. So, let's see. And then 13.6, Redwood City School District Review of KIPs Unaudited Actials for Fiscal Year 2021-22. Any comments or questions? None? 13.7, Redwood City School District Review of Rocketship Unaudited Actials for Fiscal Year 2021-22. Comments or questions?
I'm just going to take this one and say thanks real fast. Yeah. And then, Lisa, you can go ahead after that. Sorry. But the, thanks, Rick, for the work that you and your office do to review the, you know, we're the authorizing agency for the charter, so it's part of our responsibility. And just wanted to say thanks.
Can I just add quickly on 13.7, with Rocketship, their board did approve their unaudited actials in between the, the letter and tonight on October 12th.
Yeah, I also just, yeah, I just wanted to say thank you as well, Rick, to you and your team, because this is extra work. We have our own audits that we do and all of that. So this is above and beyond what is expected, you know, by a lot of the CDOs and business departments. So I just want to say thank you very much. I really appreciate the extra effort and that you do with this. Thanks.
Same here. Thank you to you and your team. That's a lot of extra work. Okay, moving on to 13.8, art, music, and instructional materials discretionary block grant plan.
There were some, there were some emails that were sent. I don't know if there are additional questions.
I think with the two emails that were sent, and that was with Trustee Wells and Trustee McAvoy, in regard to the supplanting, and I, I think between Liz and Rick, you answered the, answered the questions really, really well. We are receiving this money now, and it's not a plan that had to be created, created, and you approve, like all those other plans. We're very fortunate the state didn't require that. But there is, you know, is it Prop 28? I believe it's on the ballot. And if that does pass, the school district will be receiving additional dollars in that, you know, the art and the music category. And we will make sure that we're not supplanting. And Rick, as you noted in your response, with Liz's response, that there really hasn't been any type of information coming our way yet. So as that does come forward, we're all crossing our fingers that it passes, because the art and music is so important for all our students, that we will really pay particular attention to what we're able to do with this block grant, with these block grant dollars. Hopefully, we can find what we're looking for. But if we can't, then maybe we could do something a bit different and make sure that we're not supl- supplement, some pl- some plating at all. With this mask on, it's really difficult. So, we are on top of it. I just want to make you know, make you aware of that, that that's what we're doing, and no way will we lose our dollars by getting an audit by saying you supplanted, you know, and that has, we've never done that in this district, at least while I've been here. We've always paid particular attention to the guidelines. And once they're out, when it passes, we'll bring more information back to you. But thank you so much, no matter how you both answered that question, from both Trustee McAvoy and Trustee Wells.
Okay, moving on to 14.1, correspondence. I only received the one from the office of it. Any others from parents? No? Okay. 15.1, possible other business and suggested items for future agendas. I would like to add for the December 14 meeting, you need to add to the school committees and, yeah, school and committee assignments.
So when you're asking school and committee assignments, do you want us to review them all? Or is it go through all of them, or is it just yours?
Since David's coming on board, I think he should be given the opportunity to have the conversation with the rest of the board to see what he might be interested in, or if anyone else wants to change the school assignments, I think he could just probably take over those. But I think it's more the committee ones. Any others?
A reminder, just a reminder about Friday. I think it's 10 o'clock that we're supposed to be there, if I'm not mistaken. Is it 9:00? Thank you. I have, I'm supposed to be there at 9:00.
Okay, so what's the time?
Okay, so then, be there at 9:30.
Okay.
Can you clarify it in here? What time?
9:30.
Okay, 16.1, changes to the board meeting calendar. We don't have any, right? Okay, and with that, can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All in favor, say aye. No roll call. Thank you, everybody. Get better, Janet.
Bye.
I am getting better. Thank you.